Turn off your phones and we welcome you tonight and it will stand for our prayer and our pledge. Father, thank you for loving us in spite of ourselves and we are grateful to you for putting us in a position of having custody over this town and we take that take that role seriously and we we ask that you give us the wisdom and humility to do that job well. Just ask that we'll make good decisions for our people and may we all respect one another and pray that everything that we say and do will be pleasing and glorifying to you in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first public comment period as as usual is for matters that do not appear on the agenda. So if you have anything that you want to present to us, share with us, get off your chest, you're welcome to do so at this time. You have three minutes. We ask that you fill out a form for our clerk and give us your name and address. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next item on our agenda is presentation of the state of the town address and that will be followed by the financial report. And so I will I will deliver the state of the town address. As always, it's an honor to come before you on behalf of the town's council and staff to provide an update on the state of the town. Even better, it's a pleasure to address you. It's a pleasure because Tyrone is a great place to live and work. I'm not put in a position where I have to sugarcoat anything about our town. Presenting to you the facts about our town is a pleasure in and of itself. In preparation, I decided I'd put myself in the position of someone in any state in America looking for a place to live. What would they be looking for? What I found was home value, some of the obvious things, low crime, good schools, high life expectancy, good healthcare, walkability, access to various forms of transportation and shopping, and to me, most importantly, access to a broad range of places to worship freely. In short, what I found was the town of Tyrone. We are all blessed to be living and working here and we should never take that for granted. Tyrone continues to rank in the top three of the safest cities in Georgia year after year without fail. That's an accomplishment that is virtually unheard of. Thank you to our police department and our citizens for the role that you play in this. So let's thank our officers who are sitting in the back. And Chief, I'll let you just introduce the last names of our gentlemen that are here. At least we know he does well in an interview, right? Since I've mentioned our officers, I want to take an exit ramp, a little bit of an exit ramp from my comments. I want to discuss something real quick. We see our men and women doing their jobs and I think generally speaking Tyrone does a good job of thanking them, but we're really, are we really aware of what they take home with them each night? PTSD is not just for veterans. First responders have these same issues and many of these challenges impact them and their families. We've seen some of these realities of this throughout this past year. Our men and women have struggled together and supported one another when they deal with the difficulties of their job. So when you pray for the safety of our officers as they protect us, I ask that you also pray for them and their families and how the job impacts them mentally and emotionally. That doesn't mean that they always want to talk about it, but they do deserve our prayers. And now I'll get back to my comments. It's always been made clear to us and we agree that Tyrone needs to maintain its small town feel as we inevitably grow in a responsible way. Growth is necessary, but it needs to be deliberate. Every step we have taken over these years has been with the intent of doing just that. That's why you have you have not seen us selling out to any apartment complexes or 500,000 square foot distribution centers. It's not who we are, it's not who we want to be. So as we do revitalize and grow, our plans and actions have incorporated the look and feel that the citizens have asked for. Every major change has involved citizen committees that offer feedback and direction. This work has resulted in designs for downtown with the Town Center Mixed Use Overlay, the Livable Center Initiative, and plans for the northern corridor corridor of Highway 74. We designed this building in a way that other builders and investors would want to mimic. I spoke with a potential downtown property buyer recently who said, whatever we build, we want it to look like Town Hall because we love the look of it. This is exactly what we were shooting for and we hope that all future property owners will have that same sentiment. Another way we can make this happen is through the creation of the Downtown Development Authority. While they are a separate entity, we work closely with them. We help fund them, we share ideas, and we have crossover and dedicated staff and Councilman Campbell. The DDA has some great ideas for downtown and you will see some of these ideas come to fruition this year. For example, we're confident that the old fire station will be repurposed and possibly completely remodeled in 2023. It will serve as another impetus for a bright vibrant downtown. We have already had many conversations with people who are interested in that property and I'm confident that you will be pleased with the outcome. We also have a very active Friends of the Museum Committee that is regularly hosting events to raise money and to attract visitors to enjoy the many artifacts that have been assembled. This is another reason to come into town and another reason we need to commit ourselves to make it easy, making it easy for people to get here. Something else that we're doing to partner with investors is our street scape program. We will begin construction on our downtown street scape projects this spring to improve the aesthetics and walkability of our downtown. We are also committed to bringing people downtown from existing neighborhoods by constructing multi-use paths. If we want a vibrant downtown, we have to bring people here, preferably on foot or golf cart. This year, we will give over a thousand residents golf cart access to town that currently don't have it. First is the far road corridor. I'm finally able to announce that we are confident that all right-of-way acquisition will be complete for the Tyrone road path by next week. This means that we will be able to begin construction in the spring or summer. So amen to that. Secondly, we will begin and probably complete construction this year on the Sonora Road, Spencer Road multi-use path, which will provide Southampton residents access to downtown and residents on our east side access to the shopping center. For Pendleton, Berry Hill, and Swanson Valley, we will invest in traffic calming and share the road measures that will allow you to get to downtown on foot or on golf carts. It's not as easy for an existing municipality to build cart paths as it is for a new city and it takes much longer for us to do so, but we're doing all we can to make it happen. If you don't have a literal multi-use path adjacent to you, keep in mind that our golf cart ordinance allows for street use in many cases based on speed limit. Another big project we expect to work on in 23 will be the roundabout at Arrowood, Palmetto, and Spencer Roads. This will take about a year to complete, but it's important to our traffic flow, so we'll get it done. Shifting gears to park investments, we're excited to see the progress of the new pickleball courts at Red Wine Park, another project that will begin construction in the coming weeks. The bid has been awarded and we are currently picking out colors. Anybody that's built a house knows that when you're picking out colors, you know that tangible change is right around the corner. We will have eight new courts available to the pickleball community, which is exploding in popularity. 2023 will also bring about improvements to Hanley Park. We recently purchased new scoreboards, we're paying for field improvements, and we plan to complete the new bathrooms for the soccer fields this year. I've mentioned many new projects that are finally coming to fruition in 2023. I want to point out that this is only half of what will actually be accomplished. Much of what we do falls under the category of maintenance and improvements, exciting things like culverts, dams, cleaning, pruning, repairs, road resurfacing. Thank you for the last, I was wondering if anybody was going to think that was a joke or not. These are the things we thank our public works teams for, team members for. We have a group of men that work hard all day, every day, regardless of the weather, and we're grateful for them. I don't know that any of them are present, but please extend our gratitude to them. The majority of the projects I've mentioned are being funded by the 2017 SPOLOST. Without the SPOLOST approval, they either wouldn't have been done, they wouldn't be, they would be significantly delayed, or would be would be funded by increased mileage rates. Fayette County voters will be voting in March, Election Day is March 21st, to renew this SPOLOST with a new list of projects. I invite you to visit our website or come by to see what is planned based on, again, based on the input from a citizen committee for the 2023 SPOLOST prior to your vote. Speaking of our website, I want to tell you about a new tool you can use to stay informed about what we're doing and how far along we are. Brandon has prepared a spreadsheet that will be updated as as each project advances. You can visit tyronga.gov罡ex for this information. I also encourage everyone to visit our website to sign up for our newsletter so you can receive all of our town news and events. Thank you, Brandon, for these tools and everything else you do. In this newsletter, you will be introduced to all of the activities of partly of our library and recreation department, among others. Both of these departments host events constantly throughout the week that appeal to all age groups. Patty and Linda lead outstanding departments and deserve major kudos for their commitment to our town. If 2023 sounds like a year of hard work and progress, that's because it is. Many of the things we've been planning and preparing for over the last six to eight years will actually happen this year. As slow as these things are, they are essential, they are essential to successful and cost-effective projects. Scott and Phillip, thank you for guiding us through this aspect of the work. Fortunately, funding is not our major challenge and we have a strong team led by Sandy that helps us navigate our way through these funding issues. So I want to thank you, Sandy and Bridget, for the work that you do in navigating through all of the funding. Probably our biggest challenge here is manpower. We're limited in what we can accomplish from a project management standpoint, so it may be that we have to address that during budget season, we don't know. You deserve to have things done the way we have promised you that they would be done. Earlier I spoke about all the advantages of living in Tyrone. We are doing our part in making Tyrone a great investment and we will continue to do so. Now we need private investors to join us in making it a vibrant community with a small town feel. In closing, I want to thank this council and our outstanding staff for the role each of you play in this town. You as citizens, you don't have council members who've run for office for glamorous reasons. Your council members love their town and have sacrificed in countless ways to make it better. You don't have staff members who clock in, draw a paycheck, complain about their jobs, pass time, and clock out. You have staff members who have committed themselves to us and do everything they can to perform well despite modest pay in a difficult economy. On behalf of council and our citizens, we appreciate your work ethic, your integrity, and all of your attitudes. Let's all, almost 8,000 of us, work together for the best interests of our town. We won't always agree on everything, but let's respect one another and stand together on the principle that what God blessed us with, we will do our very best to protect and maintain. Okay, now things are really going to get exciting and I'm going to defer to our financial team to take it from here.
She's getting all your jokes.
Good evening, council.
We have our auditor Julie George here to present the financials from last fiscal year. I know this is an exciting time for you. So anyway, she's from Rushton and Company and take it away, Julie.
Good evening. I will say that when I'm here in February for a meeting, I get to hear the state of the town, that I enjoy that. So yeah, this isn't going to be as interesting as the projects he's talking about coming up, but we'll talk a little bit about the past. It's always more exciting to talk about what's coming, isn't it? But I want to say thank you to council for engaging Rushton to perform the audit. We appreciate you, we enjoy working with the town. And I also want to say thank you to Brandon, Sandy, Bridget, and just all the employees we worked with during the audit. We certainly couldn't do this as smoothly as we do without their assistance and there's no way I could name everybody that we worked with during the process, but everybody's always very attentive to our inquiries, to our needs. If we're ever waiting on anything from a third party, because we do obtain some reports and confirmations from third parties, they're always very quick to follow up and try to get that information to us if there's a delay from a third party. And they're just very proactive in the process and we appreciate that. You know, we don't have to go ask where something is. I mean, they know what we've asked for and they're working on it and they're getting it to us or following up with us on additional needs and we really appreciate that that proactiveness and that being prepared for us when we're here. And so that really makes for that week. It's a busy week for sure, I'm sure Sandy and Bridget can attest to that, but it certainly makes it go smoother that they put in that effort ahead of time and, you know, commit so much time to us while we're on site to make sure that, you know, we walk out of here with what we needed to accomplish that week. So we appreciate that. So I want to begin by letting you know what you have. You should have three things, a letter, a presentation, and a bound financial report. Going to cover the letter first, just because it, you know, the other two kind of co-mingle and we'll be back and forth in those, but this is a standard letter that we actually issue to you each year. It does change each year because it is relevant to the audit that we're presenting. And as Sandy mentioned, I'm presenting the audit tonight for the year end June 30, 22. So one thing I wanted to point out about this letter is it's communications that we're required to make to you. And as compared to the prior year, I think the most significant item in this letter that is different is that the town did adopt GASB number 87 for 63022 and that's mentioned on here and it's described in the disclosures and then there's some new numbers on here that have not been before. All governments were required to adopt that either 63022 or 1231, depending on their year end, and the town has timely adopted that. In addition, everything was timely filed in December with the Department of Audits. So what we'll do now is go through the presentation and there'll be some references to the financial statements themselves, but I just wanted to mention that that letter covers a few things that you are accustomed to seeing, but that that new financial policy is relative to a new standard required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Okay, so we'll start with the presentation on page one. And another thing I wanted to point out, also some new standards this year, these standard-setting authorities stay busy and keep us busy in doing so. So on page one through three of the bound report, we have the independent auditors report. It does look different from how it's looked in the past and I just wanted to mention that difference. The standards that we follow as auditors change the format of this report. And now the opinion is the first paragraph. It used to be at the bottom, if you were to look at the 63021 report, you will notice some differences and that's the key difference and I just wanted to point that out. And that is now in the first paragraph. I think that's very important because obviously a financial statement user grabs this report, flips to the auditor's report, they want to know what the opinion is, that's what they're looking for. And the opinion for the town of Tyrone for 63022 is an unmodified opinion. That's also known as a clean opinion. That means we did not have to make any modifications to the standard auditor's report relative to this set of financial statements and means that we believe the financial statements do present fairly in all material respects, the financial position of the town at June 30th, 22, and also the respective changes in financial position occurring during that period ended 63022. So that's definitely what you're looking for and the verbiage of the opinion didn't change that much in that paragraph, it's just the placement of it. Now, some other verbiage did change, I wanted to point that out just to make you aware of the change. They have always mentioned that we are going to provide reasonable assurance, but not absolute assurance, but they've not defined that as well as they do here in this new revised report. And if you'll look at the top of page two, it explains that reasonable assurance is a high level of assurance, but it's not absolute assurance and therefore is not a guarantee that an audit conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards will always detect a material misstatement when it exists. So the audit has always offered reasonable rather than absolute assurance, but they do go into more detail in this revised report in explaining what that means. And they also go on to define, you know, well, what is a material misstatement? And then that same paragraph, the last sentence, misstatements are considered material if there is a substantial likelihood that individually or in the aggregate, they would influence the judgment made by reasonable user based on the financial statements. So those are just a couple of changes that they made that I think would help the user better understand what what we're doing here. You know, we're offering reasonable assurance that the financial statements are presented fairly and it does still explain the responsibilities of management and of the auditor. You know, the financial statements are the responsibility of the town's management and our responsibility is to express this opinion on whether we believe based on our test, our procedures, that they do present fairly the financial position of the town and its activities for the year. Okay, we'll move on to slide two. Okay, so the first couple sets of financials that we'll talk about today are the government-wide statements. So that is a statement of net position and statement of activities. Those are presented on the full accrual basis of accounting and they're for all of the town's activities. So when you look at these statements, starting on page four, that includes your general fund, your SPOLOST funds, your drug forfeiture funds, it's everything combined into one statement and also includes your solid, your sewer fund and the component unit. There is a new component unit this year reported and that's your DDA. So that includes the town as a whole, whereas a lot of times you're looking at things by fund, like, you know, here's the general fund numbers and transactions and here's the SPOLOST fund. This is everything combined and they are in separate columns, so your governmental activities is going to be your general fund, your SPOLOST fund, your governmental fund types, and your business type activities will be your sewer. And as I said, that component unit column is the Downtown Development Authority. And this statement here is similar to a balance sheet, if you're accustomed to that term in the private sector. It lists all of the town's assets, deferred outflows of resources, liabilities, and deferred inflows of resources, and also shows the town's net position. And on page six, we have a statement of activities. Again, this is for the town as a whole and this shows the town's sources of revenue. Some are program revenues such as a grant that's for a specific purpose and there's also tax revenues or sales tax, property tax. Those are general revenues and they're shown towards the lower half of page six. And the expenses are by function and again, that includes all of the governmental funds in those first functions. And then if you look down below to the business type activities, you'll see that the sewer utility fund is included separately. And also we have a component unit line for the Downtown Development Authority, but it does put all of the town's activities on a single page. And we're going to move on over to slide three and just take a look at the town's net position. So on page five, when considering the assets and liabilities, we end with a what we call net position and that is broken down into net investment and capital assets. And the net investment in capital assets is the total of your capital assets, your buildings, your vehicles, your infrastructure, that is governmental activities, which would be your general government, your public safety, and then the business type, of course, being your sewer infrastructure. But that is also net of related debt. So we take everything you have, less the depreciation accumulated to date, less the debt relative to those assets, and that gets to your net investment in capital assets. And then we have restricted net position and restricted net position varies based on what the restriction is. Your more significant is capital outlay restriction and that is your SPOLOST funds because those are restricted by law for capital outlay. And then you have unrestricted. Those funds are not restricted for any specific purpose and can be used, you know, on what what you guys decide you need to do as far as government goes. And that is up over prior year. So if we look at this nine million, well, let's look at the 10 million, let's look at it in total. If we look at this 10 million and we look at, that's the unrestricted and we add in the net investment and the unrestricted and we've got a $28 million total. And that is up two point, almost 2.5 million over the prior year. And primarily that total is up, you'll see the net investment is at 9. And primarily, that total is up, you'll see the net investment is at 9.3. These are combined on here. I'm sorry, I don't have that separate for just the governmental activities alone. But if you'll look at the total net investment in capital assets, that went up from a 12.8 in the prior year to 13.5. And that is because the town has continued to invest in new capital outlays. So we see that number go up because there's money being spent there. And that does contribute to some of that total increase. But also, looking at everything together, you know, some of your restricted could be up, some of your unrestricted could be up. Everything goes into that total. Any questions about, those are probably not numbers that you look at on a regular basis because you're used to looking at the fund level. So it's, there's a lot that goes into those numbers. And it's kind of hard to talk about those relative to what you might have just looked at in that you're not used to looking at it collectively altogether. So, but, you know, pull it all together, you know, that net position, you know, is up over prior year. We can see that the town has invested in more capital over the prior year, and I think those are both positive ways to look at that net position. Moving on to something that you are more accustomed to looking at is the general fund. So I'm going to flip over to pages 55, starting in that bound report, and let's talk about the general fund. Now, the activity of the general fund does go into that government-wide statement along with other funds. And of course, the general fund being the larger, more significant of the town and also being all of the operations where most of the revenues are going, where most of the expenditures are coming out of. So we want to take a look at that. So one thing that I wanted to look at is just your revenues. You know, what happened to revenues of the general fund over the prior year? Well, those were down 249,000. So I wanted to share with you, you know, what caused that, what was different from last year. Property taxes increased. That's most likely, I have it documented in my work papers, but without looking back, I would say that's most likely due to increased valuation, because I don't recall the mileage rate going up, so that should be increased valuation. Sales tax went up almost 100,000. We are seeing that trend in most municipalities and counties, that sales tax has been up. I have some clients concerned about it because it seems to have gone up more than they think it should have. But it, we are seeing sales tax go up, and we're seeing insurance premium tax go up. So the trends that we're seeing with the Town of Tyrone in those aspects, they are positive, and they're what we're seeing with other governments. Licenses and permits decreased 60,000. I wanted to point out that last year, there was some nonrecurring right-of-way fees. So it's really more last year that was different than this year. This year is more back to normal, whereas last year, the town had about 50,000 in right-of-way fees. That was a nonrecurring transaction. And also, last year, you had cares. So last year, the cares grant totaled almost 400,000. So not having that in FY '22 obviously would make the revenues down, you know, by at least that amount, and then add in the other differences. ARPA is not reported in the general fund, it's in a separate fund, so that's why I'm not mentioning it here. You did, of course, receive the ARPA funds, and it is presented separately. And just to bring that to your attention, let's look at page seven. And after the general fund, you will see that the American Rescue Plan Fund is reported in its separate column. And I just wanted to point that out so that you would see where those funds are held within the financial statements. So these general fund slides we're looking at does not include any ARPA activity at all. Expenditures. So looking back at the general fund on page 56, 57, expenditures were down 1.28 million, which is significant percentage at 21%. But if we look at what was going on in the town in FY '21 versus '22, well, you had a large capital outlay in '21 on this building, and that was 1.8 million. So the general government expenditures in FY '22 decreased 1.7 million, with most of that being the expenditures toward the building in '21. Public safety, public works, and culture and rec also increased, all increased during the year. So we've got some change there. But definitely, having completed the building and not having that large capital outlay again this year is the more significant difference in the general fund expenditures. Looking at your unassigned fund balance, now, when we look at fund balance, we have different components of that, just like we do net position. So this is your unassigned. That means it's not restricted by law, it's not assigned by council to be used on anything specific. And if we're looking at that, your fund balance was 9.2 million at 63022, and that would be about 21 months of expenditures. So that is a very healthy fund balance. You're definitely in a position of health where if you need to make capital outlays and other such decisions, you know, with general fund money, you've got a good reserve there to do so. So that's definitely a healthy place to be.
So none of our SPOST dollars are appearing in that 21.7 months?
That's correct. SPOST is also reported in a separate fund. So if we look over on the, I did not flag that page, but I can find it real quick. If we look over on page seven, you know, we've got the general fund, and you'll see in that general fund column, the unassigned fund balance, that 9.271 is the number that I'm using here in this calculation. And if you look at the fund balance in SPOST, that's a separate 4.6 million fund balance that is restricted for capital outlay. So it's not in the numbers that we're discussing on this slide. Okay, moving on to slide five. We've got a graph here, just looking at revenues and expenditures over the last five years. Revenues are the blue line, and you'll see that, for the most part, they continue to go up until this past year. And again, you had some one-time revenues with the cares and with the right-of-way that were, you know, fairly significant nearing, you know, 450,000. So, you know, if you look back, sort of ignoring that 2021 that was high, you will see that other than that year, they are up over the prior year. So I think that's a good trend, to see those revenues trending up. And being able to identify why it trended down this year was attributable to those one-time revenues that we knew when they come in weren't going to happen again. Looking at expenditures, expenditures were, you know, are down. And if you look, again, you know, why are those down so much? Well, there was significant capital outlays in the past two years in constructing primarily this building out of the general fund. And, you know, so those are getting back to a level that is closer to, it is up over 18 and 19, but getting back to a level that is closer. And another thing, you know, that I wanted to point out, even though expenditures are up, they are still well below your revenues this year. And I, you know, that again is, I mean, you at least want a balanced budget, but you come out, you know, even better than that. And in the years where the expenses did increase over the revenues, that was capital outlays. Because it, I know last year was about 1.7. I don't remember the year before, but I know there were significant capital outlays relative to the building at that time, too. Right, moving on to page six. We'll take a quick look at the sewer fund. It, you know, it doesn't have as much variation to the prior year as the general fund, just because the activity in the general fund's changing, so the numbers are going to change. There is a small increase in revenue in the sewer fund and also increase in expenditures. And I wanted to point out that a good bit of that increase in expenditures is the depreciation because that sewer expansion is completed now, and now that is being depreciated. So that 45,000 increase is not cash, it is depreciation because we recognize the cost of that sewer system over time, whereas you paid for it as you constructed it. So we should see that level out, you know, next year because that depreciation is going to be comparable because this was the first year with the full year of depreciation. And other than that, expenses were down, a decrease in cost of sales and service and in personnel services. Any questions about the general or sewer fund at all? Okay, let's see. Moving on to slide seven, I wanted to talk with you about the report on internal control over financial reporting. Because your audit is required to be performed in accordance with government auditing standards, we do issue this separate report based on those requirements where we have looked at your internal controls and your compliance. We're not providing an opinion, but if anything comes to our attention, we do let you know in this report. This report describes the scope of our testing and the results of our testing, and that's what I wanted to share. Coming at 2201, we determined to be a significant deficiency, and that is a lack of segregation of duties, which we've probably talked about most audits. And what that means is there's not enough accounting at administrative staff to have optimum segregation of duties between authorization, custody, record-keeping, reconciliation. There's overlaps in those areas due to having a limited number of staff, just based on your size. And even though that is common in governments of your size, and even in larger governments, because they're going to have some departments that have limited number of staff that take money and do some accounting for their department, it is still a risk you need to be aware of, as you know. It does, you know, expose you to a greater risk of fraud. And I will say that management has implemented, I think every year, they've tried to implement anything we've recommended. So it's not that they haven't implemented anything we've recommended, it's, you know, that those things still don't alleviate that risk. They lessen that risk, and they certainly improve those controls. But when there is limited staff, a lot of those alleviations are on the back end with review, and there's less controls on the front end because there's just not four or five people to do number one, two, three, four, if that makes sense. Moving on to the next comment, which is 22, 2022002. I wanted to talk about this one with you. We did not have this one last year, and I wanted to address it. We did notice multiple instances in the year where the bank reconciliations were not performed on time, and I wanted to spend a few minutes to talk to you about that. One, your staff does know how to do that, so it's not a case of, do we have staff that know how to do that? And same with segregation of duties. I have, sometimes there's confusion on, you know, what does that mean? Does it mean our staff doesn't know how to do it? And that's not the case here. The case with the segregation of duties is just not having sufficient staff. And I think that may also be a contributed factor to this one, so I wanted to talk about that. The finance department is capable of performing these. They were performed, they were just not performed as timely as what we look for and what effective internal controls would recommend. And I think we've seen this here before, but I feel in the past, when we've seen it, it's been when there has either been turnover in the finance department, so there maybe weren't fully staffed during that year, or there was training due from some turnover. But, you know, as far as I know, there was no turnover in finance during the year, no one was out an extended amount of time. So I think this may be an indication to maybe consider, you know, if things have grown enough, if there's enough activity going on, enough projects going on, if finance might need additional staffing. So I wanted to mention that because, like I said, it's, when we've seen it before here, it has been a staffing issue. And this year, though, you've been fully staffed, and it's being done, it's being done correctly, it's just a delay in getting to it. I mean, it would be, you know, like if you reconciled your bank account at home, I don't know how many people still do that, and you did it three months later, well, if something hit that bank account that you didn't authorize, you're finding out a lot later about a problem. So we do think that that may be a consideration to talk to management, finance, to see if maybe it's time to consider additional staff. And that would also help with the segregation of duties. I can't say for sure that that would be eliminated because I don't know that yet, I have to evaluate that and how things change. But it would definitely help strengthen controls, having another person there. And I do think the town has a lot going on. I mean, just in what the mayor was talking about in the state of the town, it sounds like y'all are really busy. And, you know, working with finance departments all the time, you know, they're accounting for that. There's more money coming in, there's more grant stipulations to look at. GASB stays busy. We're going to talk about GASB in another slide here. And so there's just, you know, there's the ARPA funding to keep up with. So I think things are just busier and that those new projects and activities probably taken more of their time. And, you know, you just want to make sure that, look at that and see if that might be a factor in helping alleviate that one. And I think, too, another consideration, just outside looking in, when things seem behind like that, you usually prefer to bring in experience versus entry level because training takes time. I'm doing a lot of it myself right now, and it's hard to train when there's already not enough time for the tasks that need done. So I would think about, as you have those conversations, you know, what level, what level is needed as well. Going on to slide eight, we can talk about GASB 87. GASB 87 is a standard that we, as your auditors and Sandy and Bridget, have, you know, we've been talking about that for what seems like forever. I feel like me and our other managers and partners have all taught this class at least one time, and that we've been talking about it and teaching it for five years, and it's probably been in this presentation for five years. GASB has delayed this one due to the complexity of it, and in addition to that, they delayed it due to the pandemic. So now, 63022, the town, along with other June 30 year-end governments, have implemented GASB 87. So what that did with the Town of Tyrone's financial statements was require that a lease receivable be recorded for a cell tower, communications tower lease. And we looked at and evaluated all of your leases after Sandy and Bridget accumulated those and entered them to a spreadsheet. And following the standards, that ended up being, the impact of that was to record that lease. And I believe it's a receivable of about $30,000. And it does have minimal impact on net position, just because the way the standard is written, you recognize a receivable, but you also recognize a deferred outflow. So the net impact on that position is, or on fund balance, either one, is minimal. But in accordance with the standards, the town has booked those leases that do meet the reporting requirements under 87. I will say that we did not find any leases to be material that create I will say that we did not find any leases to be material that created liabilities. We only found a material lease that is receivable to the town, not payable from the town. The capital lease that was payable from the town was a lease that, under the previous standards, was already required to be booked, so it did not affect that one. Moving on to slide nine, speaking of Gatsby being busy and finance and auditors trying to keep up, we've got Gatsby ninety-six coming up, that's effective for Tyrone for June thirty, twenty, twenty-three. This is very similar to eighty-seven, except instead of being for your equipment and rental-type leases, it is for your software arrangements. So you probably all know, it's not anymore that you just go out and buy software off the shelf, or just buy a software package and that's it. Usually now, there's a lot of subscriptions involved. So what Gatsby has decided in this standards is that that subscription is an asset, it's an intangible asset, it's not something we can go pick up like a police car, it's an intangible asset, but it does create a right-to-use subscription asset. And there's also a related liability for that, because you usually have a commitment to pay that, even though it's not a typical debt, like a note payable or your bonds, there is a liability to pay that. So Gatsby is going to require the town to evaluate those subscriptions for software this year, and that may impact the financial statements similarly to how the leases did this year. And, you know, just without me looking through, I mean, the first couple that I would look at would probably be ENCODE, which is the financial software, courtware that PD uses. I would just start gathering all the software agreements and just see what those stipulations are, and once those are gathered, we'll assist the finance department in evaluating those. And this one, we expect to impact most governments and to impact most governments significantly, in that most governments are going to have something to record. And our information's on the last slide, I'm Julie, feel free to reach out to me anytime. And Chris, the partner on the engagement, managing partner of the firm, couldn't be here tonight, but he's available to you as well. And any questions, anything I need to clarify or touch on again, any questions with the New Gaspys, with comments?
No, not at all. It's about as clear as mud.
Mud's not too clear.
The government-wide financial statements may be about as clear as mud, but hopefully the general fund and what you look at every month, you know, agrees to what you knew about and seen, but when those start getting rolled together and you don't look at them that way, it does get convoluted. So Gatsby does a good job at making things a little complex sometimes.
Well, we have, of course, several staff members that deal with the financial, you know, Sandy, Bridget, April, Sierra, I don't know who else deals with our checks and balances and that kind of thing. So all of you are to be recognized for doing so and doing it in a way that makes the auditor's jobs easy, so.
Yeah, we appreciate that. I mean, I just want to, again, reiterate how much we appreciate the cooperation and the proactiveness and the responsiveness that we do receive here.
Good job, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is Philip, and we'll talk about a text amendment.
First public hearing for you tonight is a follow-up on something that we've discussed before, a couple of text amendments regarding basically Highway seventy-four, the first of which is a consideration of a text amendment to section one thirteen of Article Five of the zoning ordinance regarding district regulations to create a BTP, or business technology park, zoning classification. So we did have a, we had a workshop on this, we've been through this with Planning Commission as well, both in a workshop and the most recent meeting with them. And the purpose of this, the establishment of this district is, of course, to try and help facilitate economic development and guide economic development on the Highway seventy-four corridor. So this business technology park zoning classification is appropriate for what we call the community gateway character area in the town, which exists along seventy-four, with a specific note in our comp plan that it's most appropriate above the Jenkins Road intersection, so going north. So that's essentially where this zoning classification would be limited to in terms of our future land use planning goals. And after performing some research and coordinating with entities such as the Development Authority, other, the development community, we formulated this particular district. I will note, since it's been in front of you, and Planning Commission, there's one major change since the last time that we discussed, and it was Planning Commission's concern regarding the height restriction. So we did increase in this district, as opposed to others, the allowable height restriction for a building from thirty-five feet to fifty. Planning Commission was concerned about the scale of such a building on Highway seventy-four visually. They asked that we employ a similar strategy than we did to sound stages, was so that, in our ordinance, the way that sound stages operate, the base height restriction in the town is thirty-five feet, for every foot above that, that they want to construct a building, the front setback has to increase. The purpose for that is to reduce the apparent size of the building from Highway seventy-four right-of-way. So if you'll go to page seventeen of your packet, you'll see number eight here has height limitations. It says the front setback shall be increased two feet for every one foot of building height over thirty-five feet, to a maximum of a fifty-foot building height, or a raised landscape berm shall be constructed one foot high for every one foot of building height over thirty-five feet, to a maximum of a fifteen-foot berm height, or any combination thereof. And then the second item there is basically an increased version of that restriction or that provision adjoining residential districts. So it would go up, for every one foot of building height, the setback would be increased five feet. So they wanted to add that in there to help address some of the impact concern that they saw from buildings that would be that size. You can choose to, of course, adopt it that way. Staff thought that that was an appropriate provision to add in there, it does add complexity, but it also is meant to address an aesthetic concern. If council wishes to adopt it that way, we can. We can adopt it back to a standard height restriction, or we can readopt basically the base standards to include a higher just general setback, however you want to do it, but staff does recommend it as written in the way that Planning Commission did propose it. So everything else, I will let you ask me any questions that you have in regards to the provisions of this district, same with the subsequent text amendments that we have tonight. But everything else seems to be the way we discussed, we talked about a maximum building footprint of around three hundred thousand square feet, we talked about the percentage allowance of warehousing, which we've tapped at fifty percent, so it would be fifty percent warehousing and distribution to more than that, again, to try and address the concern of warehousing, exclusively warehousing and distribution facilities operating along Highway seventy-four. We're going for employment, economic development-based businesses. So these are the types of things that we put in these provisions, and I'll let you ask me any questions if you have any.
I'd just like to say I like what Planning Commission did about the footage, the height of the building.
I have a clarification about that. This may sound like it's splitting hairs, but it, so if a building is, let's say, the first one hundred feet in depth, the building is twenty-five feet.
Okay.
And then after that one hundred feet, it jumps up. Which standards are being used on this, on these requirements?
Making me think on that one, sir. I believe we would consider the building height, if it's variable, we would just go with the default of what is the maximum height of that building? And we would ask, because it's part of the overall scale of the building, we would ask that that building be shifted back for any footage over the standard thirty-five feet. That's, maybe legal has a different interpretation, but.
I would say you go to your maximum height on any part of the building as your standard. Five percent of your building toward the rear is fifty feet. Less than fifty feet, focus on the fifty feet.
Go with the more restrictive in that.
All right.
That was a good question, though.
Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't think that one was coming, so.
All right, are there any other questions? All right, this is a public hearing, and, back to my agenda here. So is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this text amendment for the BTP zoning classification? Hearing none. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this text amendment for the BTP zoning classification? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion on this agenda item?
I make a motion that we approve the text amendment to section one-one-three dash one-nine-one of Article Five of the zoning ordinance regarding the quality growth development district special requirements, and that. Oh, no. Oh, I'm sorry. This one right here? Okay, all right, number six. Consideration, I make a motion that we consider the text amendment to section one thirteen of Article Five of the Zone Ordinance Regarding District Regulations to Create a Business Technical Park as proposed by the Planning Board and as written in the paperwork tonight.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, our second public hearing item, I'll also ask Mr. Trokey to present.
Again, this is just in regards to Highway seventy-four, we do currently have an overlay district present, the Quality Growth Development District Special Requirements is what it's called. We have decided to kind of be more clear about what we want to accomplish on Highway seventy-four, especially given all the commentary we've gotten in the comprehensive plan, we've gotten from council, we've gotten from Planning Commission, about making sure that we're clear about these standards and that they really are meant to address quality control of construction along Highway seventy-four. We've put much more specific information about landscaping, so on page twenty and twenty-one of your packet, the first two pages of this ordinance, we talked very specifically about what the planted buffer needs to be like. In our previous ordinance version, it just said landscaped, which could be sod, it was very open to interpretation, we got a lot of commentary that that needed to be shored up in a much more specific way, we put that in there. We talked about architectural and dimensional requirements, what needs to happen, it needs to come to you for approval, HVAC equipment should be screened, and we talked about exterior finished construction. One of the big things that we established here for the district was a much more objective measure of where the district is physically located. So previously, the district basically just said, any property fronting Highway seventy-four would have to comply. Well, there are some properties that front Highway seventy-four that are about two thousand, with the building two thousand feet beyond Highway seventy-four, completely invisible. So we took a look at other standards for overlay districts, they have usually a requirement of width of the district established, that number is typically a thousand feet. We thought for Tyrone, just given the lay of our land, eight hundred feet would be sufficient for that type of requirement, so eight hundred feet in either direction from the right-of-way of Highway seventy-four is where these extra provisions will apply. So they'll typically apply to all buildings in the front of a particular development, the buildings in the back would not be held to the same standard, although we would want them to be quality buildings, they wouldn't have to be, they wouldn't have to meet the high percentage of premium requirements, material requirements and things of that nature. So that's really what we did here with this ordinance, it's intended to improve the aesthetic of the corridor and to shore up our standards there.
Okay. Any questions for staff or council before we move into the public hearing?
I'll make one more note of a major item that we put in here, I'm sorry, traffic management. On page twenty-two at the very bottom, we included something called the Northwest Corridor Special Management Traffic Area. That's a provision to be able to provide a collector road from the Thompson Road interchange all the way down to Kirkley Road for internal traffic circulation. This is a provision that we adopted very similar to what the county has, in order for there to be better traffic management and circulation on Highway seventy-four. So that is a major addition that I didn't want to just gloss over, but we're trying to be proactive in traffic management with that.
And if one property owner is completely in agreement with that, and another property owner is not, does that just mean that the one that does not agree with that, their land is useless, because they won't comply?
They would have to develop that property consistent with this ordinance. So it does not require that the road be constructed all at one time, but it does require that anybody that is within that special management traffic area, it does require that they provide a connection consistent with these regulations. So if there's somebody adjacent to Kirkley Road that does not want to develop at this time, but there's somebody further up that does, whoever's constructing first needs to incorporate that, and the owner that's not constructing yet would have to pay attention, essentially, to what's going on, because eventually they will need to tie into that connection to provide circulation. So if they disagree with the ordinance, they'll disagree with the ordinance, but we want to make sure that we address traffic concerns, and this is one of the, I guess this is the ante to being able to develop at this intensity along Highway seventy-four.
I guess what I'm thinking is, property A, let's say, is the one that is not complicit. Property B is wanting to construct.
Yeah.
The road would need to go through property A, and you're going to make property B pay for construction of a road on property A?
No, they would just have to construct it on their property, but eventually property A, once it developed, would have to meet that requirement and connect with property B.
All right, any other questions?
Philip, those back buildings that are not on seventy-four, you do have standards and regulations for those buildings also, though, right?
There are base standards, just present for all buildings, and we do have the comprehensive plan to help guide those buildings. They really, you know, just in general, the ordinance has provisions on buildings in those districts that say, you know, bay doors should not be facing any main street, there should be, you know, screening of certain material requirements, they can't have exterior storage. So those are base requirements that are present in any zoning district, in the base BTP zoning is also present there. These are just the upgraded, beefed-up kind of standards for anything that's directly visible from Highway seventy-four, at least within eight hundred feet of visibility of Highway seventy-four. But there are still, you know, standards for any building that doesn't fall into this area.
They can't just go in there and put a plain old concrete building up and nothing look good about it?
Yeah, we would be encouraging something different architecturally than that.
Encouraging or requiring?
We don't have architectural, if you're beyond eight hundred feet, we don't have specific architectural requirements in terms of materials. We do when it comes to basically the orientation of bay doors and long flat walls and things like that, but it's not the same. We can increase the, what you think is appropriate. We can increase the, the, what you think is appropriate for the, um, the width of the district, we can increase that to a thousand feet or, or greater, but those buildings would just not be visible to the general public, so we did not feel like they needed to be held to that same standard.
Makes sense.
I just don't, I, I kind of disagree. I think that if it looks good on seventy-four, it all, all of it all look good. Maybe not as good, but at least good. You don't want to go in there and ride down and see something up front pretty and then think, God, what happened back here, you know? I, I think we need to address that. That's just my opinion.
You do have requirements, though, I mean, of some sort.
We, we, we do have some, like I said, we do have some requirements, but we don't have architectural material requirements, so we have in the overlay, a building that fronts Highway seventy-four has to be seventy percent Class A material.
Right.
So seventy percent Class A material is brick, glass, stone, those different types of materials. For a building that would not be in that district, we don't have a material requirement, so they could theoretically use a hundred percent of Class B materials, which is EPIS or something like that, um, they would still be held to landscape, the base ordinance landscaping standards, base ordinance screening requirements, base ordinance, um, bay door, you know, directions, things like that. So they wouldn't be able to just line the street or the front-facing side of that building with bay doors and have HVAC equipment visible. It would have to be a neat and a tidy building, um, but we wouldn't be placing the same Class A building requirement, materials on them. It's, it's also just a matter of cost effectiveness for, um, for people developing along Highway seventy-four. You know, we, we did, we tried to keep that in mind in terms of cost effectiveness, particularly when we're talking about large buildings, three hundred thousand square feet, that range. But we can go into any of the base, in terms of addressing Ms. Fur's, uh, comments, we can go into the base district of any zoning district that would be along Highway seventy-four and modify those zoning classifications to include some archit, some, some, some higher architectural elements if we, if you would like. It's, it's just sometimes it's difficult to do that with the, the, the boundary of this district, because we're talking about buildings that we're not sure how far they would be from Highway seventy-four. If we wanted to be all encompassing, I guess we could say, you know, the district overlay requirements have to extend maybe two thousand feet. That would be, that would pretty much cover almost any level of any property on Highway seventy-four. You can do it that way, or we can come up with slightly lower but still higher building requirements for each of the base districts if you wanted to address that concern.
Think we need to.
How you want to address it? What, what do you think is the best way?
I don't know. That's out of my, that's out of my whatever. Yeah, that's out of my pay grade, I don't know. I just, I just think about, okay, if I were looking to buy some property to build a building on and, uh, and I'm riding down through there and I see these nice buildings up front, and then I go down here and I see some that are not so nice, I'm thinking, do I really want to build in here and look like this? And it, and two, if you got, if you were a real estate agent and you were trying to sell some of this and the ones up front look really nice, and then you get back in the back there and some of them not so nice, it might be a hard sale, you know?
So what would be the big, the biggest challenge would just be doing the, the aesthetics of the front of the building, increasing the quality of materials that they'd have to use on the front of the building, right? I mean, that's really the difference.
Did you tell them what kind of material they have to use?
Yes, for the overlay, it's seventy percent, uh, Class A materials, which are classified as, uh, brick, uh, brick veneer, stone, um, with some descriptions there, or glass.
Is that all of the buildings? Even the ones that are eight hundred feet back?
It's, it's any building within eight hundred feet, any portion of a building within eight hundred feet of the right-of-way of.
What about beyond the eight hundred feet?
Beyond the eight hundred feet, we do not have, we do not have.
Yeah, I don't like that.
Well, then maybe the easiest, easiest way to accomplish what you are saying you, you want to accomplish is, is to, to, uh, extend that eight hundred feet, so then.
I think it all ought to be that. I don't think.
If you wanted to include the extent of all properties along Highway seventy-four, I, if, if that was the goal, fifteen hundred to two thousand feet would probably extend the full extent of all of those properties. But, you know, it, and it would be, it would, it would definitely be a much higher standard, you know, in a cost item for, um, for developers to come in, but it, we could extend it beyond that, we could go fif, we, instead of eight hundred feet, it could be fifteen hundred to two thousand feet. We, we can, we can table this for more research if we want to do that.
What is a reasonable visual distance?
Planning practice would state that it's a, you're talking about something that we call view sheds. So kind of like a watershed where water goes, a view shed is how far you can see something from the natural eye based on a certain perspective. So when we take a look at creating provisions aimed at improving or maintaining view sheds, we, we look at topography, we look at a couple of other things that are relevant, uh, for the area that you want to protect that view shed. Typically, along a major state route where there are large properties, perhaps a lot of visual range, a thousand feet typically maintains the view shed that we are trying to, we're trying to preserve. If you wanted to go beyond that, um, now, and so, that being said, when staff was taking a look at this, based on the topography of some of the other prop, of the properties specific to Tyrone, we believe that eight hundred feet would, would be appropriate for that. But, uh, there could certainly be some portion of a building beyond that that might be visible. We were, of course, it's not, it's not the, uh, a perfect science, it's talking about what is, what's reasonable based on the current conditions, so if you were going to discuss going the full extent of some of these properties, they, they are, they are between fifteen hundred to two thousand feet in depth for the properties along Highway seventy-four.
Are you, are you comfortable with twelve hundred?
I just think the whole project should look nice. I don't, I don't want a shabby-looking building in the back when the front looks really good. To me, that's deceiving. And I don't want Tyrone looking like, I don't want Tyrone looking, I don't know what the word is. It looks like you're doing good up front and you don't care about the back. I think they all ought to look nice.
Talking about my house? Talking about my house?
Could be talking about mine.
I don't think the issue is so much what you can see from the highway, but I think which Ms. Fur is referring to is that once the people start driving through the business par, business park, they're going to see a difference in what's up front and what's up back and, and really, it, it's just a matter of aesthetics of, of utilizing it, because you're not going to see those back buildings, because from what I gather, that back of that property that we're referring to kind of slopes down a little bit, which makes them even, from the highway, it's going to even make them a little bit more camouflaged. But once you drive back there and you're seeing concrete buildings, it's not going to have that same approach. And for someone going in there, they, I think they're going to want a nice building, and I think, you know, as a, to make it attractive, I think we need to have all the buildings have some sort of, you know, decorative fronts like we're asking towards the front. Maybe, maybe not quite to the, to the quality of that.
Yeah, but the ones up front, but.
You know, you, yes, I'm sorry.
Kind of have some kind of regulation.
I hope I'm not missing the mark here, but why don't you make the distinction between buildings that are part of a planned business park versus separate parcels? For example, you could say eight hundred feet of whatever that magic number is, or any building contained within a business park that fronts seventy-four, no matter how deep it is, all have to meet these standards. It's when you get into independent parcels beyond that, where you have a break, because you don't have buildings that are part of the same project, if you will, they're independent from the planned business park, so that may be a distinction to consider.
Sounds good.
And I agree with you. I, I'm just under the impression that all the buildings we're referring to are all part of that business park already.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so I think, it sounds like we've landed somewhere. Given that, you make sure you have language for us to, to.
Would, would you, would you, would you like to phrase a condition of the approval tonight, or would you like to table it for me to include that language for another time?
I don't see any reason to be tabling it.
No, I don't either. I think we can, as long as we have the right verbiage or the right, like, um, legal has mentioned, I think we can go forward with that. Would you agree, Ms. Fur?
Yeah. You know the map you showed us, Philip, with all the parcels? Is that the total business park that you're talking about here?
Well, we're talking about any property on highway, along Highway seventy-four north of Jenkins Road.
Okay, I got along seventy-four, I'm talking about way back in the woods.
Yes, yeah, so if, if, if we want to do, um, something as legal suggests, then.
Yeah.
We would amend this ordinance to be, the, the, the boundaries of the, of the requirements apply to any, any building within eight hundred feet of Highway seventy-four or any, any set or series of buildings part of a planned business technology park.
Whichever is greater.
Whichever is greater.
Okay, so because this is a public hearing, counselor, if we stated that clear enough for the public to be able to provide their opinion in the event that they choose to do so?
I believe you've got a, a, a sound distinction, because as long as you recognize that a separate parcel that's greater than eight hundred feet from seventy-four isn't bound by these same guidelines or requirements. Park itself could be fifteen hundred feet in depth, but all buildings in that park would be bound by these requirements because it's part of the park that fronts on seventy-four. I think that's a sound distinction that I believe that we can rely on.
Okay, and then in the event that somebody makes a motion after the public hearing, they can just state adoption of the text amendment with the changes that we have just discussed.
And maybe the phrase common development would be better, because.
Yes, common development.
Common development and it's, any building in that common development, no matter how far it is from seventy-four, is going to be subject to these requirements.
Okay.
Yeah, common development is, and, and, uh, common development also supersedes zoning classification, so if we say any, uh, any building as part of a common development that fronts on Highway seventy-four, then that would, that would be all encompassing to any, any project that falls into that classification.
All right, is council ready for public hearing? All right, is there anybody left that would like to speak in support of this? Is, uh, hearing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to Hearing none, uh, public hearing's closed, is there a motion?
Let's see if I get this right. I make a motion, um, that we adopt this, uh, text amendment to, for any building that's part of a common development, um, within that, uh, business technical park. Did I, did I get that, Philip?
Fronting seventy-four.
Correct, right, fronting seven, uh, Highway seventy-four corridor.
Okay, so, uh, that's in addition to the eight hundred feet.
That is correct, in addition to the eight hundred feet, yes. Which is, which is ever greater.
Okay, anybody else want to add something? Okay.
If I got it right.
All right, we have a motion, the public hearing has been closed, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, our next public hearing item is, um, a text amendment regarding the downtown commercial zoning district.
So this one should be very quick. We have proposed to change C-one downtown commercial, the nomenclature, to C-one community commercial. The reason for this, we have gotten a lot of questions about developing downtown and other places in the town. The C-one district operates as just a lighter commercial district, present across all character areas of the town, or not all character areas, but most areas of the town. It's not just exclusively downtown, so we get a lot of confusion about whether a town center overlay applies to a property because it's own town town commercial, but it's located down off of Dogwood Trail, or it's located up off of Swanson Road. And so we just want to be clear about, um, what this district is, we think that renaming it to community commercial, which is consistent with its intensity, not changing the alphanumeric sig, uh, symbol, so it's still going to be C-one, but it'll go from downtown commercial to community commercial, just to clear up confusion. Staff's been getting a lot of questions on that, and I think this would help clear that up.
Just semantics.
And we are, yes, and we are, we are proposing this change, of course, to the C-one district regulations section, but also anywhere else it appears in the ordinance, and I believe that's, uh, outlined as well in the resolution.
Are there any questions? All right, this public hearing, uh, is opened, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this? Hearing none, is there anyone like, here that would like to speak in opposition to this? Hearing none, the, the public hearing is closed, um, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we, um, approve the text amendment change to section one-thirteen dash one-twenty-eight of Article Five of the zoning ordinance, uh, making down, the wording downtown commercial, we now will call it community commercial.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, we are moving out of our public hearing section and, um, uh, we'll now move again to Philip regarding the Fayette County Annual Report on Fire Services Impact Fees.
Um, I'm going to request that council actually table this item until such a time that the Georgia Department of Community Affairs has approved, um, the fire impact report from the county. Uh, we're going back and forth with the county on this, we've already approved a transmittal resolution to DCA, but DCA has not yet commented on that, uh, fire impact report. We adopt after they have commented, so we're requesting it be tabled until such a time that DCA has.
You need a motion for that?
Probably better to withdraw this, because when you table, you want to table it to a date certain, you don't know when that date certain is going to be, so.
All right.
Sounds good.
And do you want a motion to withdraw it?
Please.
All right, is there a motion to withdraw the item number nine from the agenda?
Some moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. New business, uh, the consideration to approve the budgeted building planning department scanning project agreement with MCCI.
This is the last item from me. So we, during the, uh, planning workshop for twenty-twenty-two, talked about scanning files, um, at the, uh, Old Town Hall, and the file room, the, one of the main reasons that we want to do this is of course, um, just modernization, number one, but number two, preservation of documents, so we have quite a few of them. We, in this particular contract, there is a, there's a section here for addendum one regarding Laserfish, that's a, basically a, a digital repository for us to be able to access the data in a software. We are going to request that we approve this with the condition to remove addendum one. Um, we are not considering that software, we don't believe that we're, we have the scale necessary for that and it's costly. So we would like to recommend approval with the condition to exclude addendum one regarding Laserfish, um, and to approve the scanning agreement for building and planning documents with MCCI upon approval from legal for an amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eight cents.
All right.
That number again, fifty-eight thousand seven?
Fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-five and eight cents.
And eight cents, okay, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the budgeted, uh, building planning department scanning project, um, with the, with the caveat that we remove addendum one, uh, and the value not to exceed fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and eight cents. Subject, subject to legal review, thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The, any opposed? All right, Dennis, you have the next item?
Mayor, this item comes up as an agreement with Fayette County. My firm represents both of this town.
To be present if that occurs, I've prepared a conflict letter to let you know, we believe that given these circumstances, that the conflict would be non-existent, that's our opinion, however, we'd like to make sure that you agree with that, so we've prepared this letter as well as an acknowledgement of disclosure and a consent for our firm to move forward representing you in this context. If that's something that meets with your favorable consideration, we're happy to move forward and work with you to finalize this agreement.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent form regarding election service disclosure from McNally Fox Grant in Davenport?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Ms. D?
Am I on? And the agreement is for the county to do our elections, perform our elections, and they happen every other year. And the county, let's see, this is to authorize Mayor Dow to execute the intergovernmental agreement between Fayette County Elections Office and the Town of Tyrone for the purpose of conducting municipal elections during 2023, and this is for our general election in November.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for Fayette County for conducting municipal elections?
I make a, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead. Got a so moved?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our second public comment period is for matters that do or do not appear on the agenda, and the same rules apply, three minutes, fill out a form, and state your name and address. Okay, hearing none? Are there any staff comments?
I have a couple. For other staff first, if they have anything. Just a couple, number one, I want to reiterate that, as has been stated already, SPOST, the vote for the 2023 SPOST is, the election day is March twenty-first, from seven AM to seven PM, but we do have early voting. Early voting is February twenty-seventh through March third, from nine to five, March sixth through tenth, from nine to five, and March thirteenth through seventeenth, from nine to five. We'll have Saturday voting on March fourth, from nine AM to five PM, and on March eleventh, from nine AM to five PM. Early voting, entirely, of course, occurs at the police station, the former police station across the street, and then on election day, you will go to your regular polling place, that may be the police department. Just wanted to put that out there. Couple of days ago, I sent you all an email, talking about colors for the pickleball courts. Got some feedback, didn't get feedback from everybody, but I just wanted to go on record. I believe this is what we've landed on, which is, you know, you got a copy of this. If you, you know, you kind of look at maps of other pickleball courts in the area, and you know, some large, some small, this is pretty standard, and it's not, it's not wild or, you know, out there, so I think we want to be pretty standard. So that's the color scheme, I think, that we're going to go with unless anybody has objections. Okay, all right.
Okay, that is all I have. Other staff comments? Counsel comments? Okay, I would ask, before we adjourn, if council members, instead of moving to executive session, if you will just take a moment to read the minutes that you have in front of you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the executive session minutes from February second, two thousand twenty-three?
I make a motion that we do approve the executive session minutes from February second, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stand adjourned.